And then we'll have from August the 25th until some point toward the end of September to go through enough of the rest of the detail to actually approve a budget. So that's where we are today.
Okay, if you go out to the Villarica website, under Finance and City Budgets, you should see the link there for the presentation. Yes. Are you there? You good?
No, I haven't gotten there yet. Tell me where it is again.
If you go to
Right here.
I do have that.
Villarica.org, Services, and then Finance, and then Budget.
All right. And that's the workshop 819 right at the top.
Yes.
Okay, I'm there.
All right.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank y'all for being here. So, we're gonna have two days of fun. Today, we're gonna kinda do the high-level overview of the budget. We've included in this budget. We'll talk self-funded insurance, and then we'll spend a bit. We have over $9 million in capital projects that we'll look at today. And then we'll talk about debt service. And at that point, if y'all have questions, if we wanna start looking at the book in specific departments, we can do that. And then day two, Tom's gonna do more talking. He'll discuss some of our primary and secondary goals for the city, talking about growth, the millage rate, possible cuts, and questions. So, we have a full two days, but I don't know if we'll be here eight hours. All right, kinda high level. And if y'all wanna, in your book, you can, if you flip past the title page, you'll see our summary page for the budget. So that shows all the funds that are included in the budget. And each column shows the different fund. The top section is the source of funds or the revenue. The bottom section is the use of funds or the expenditures. And then that bottom line tells you if we balanced or not. So every fund is balanced except General Fund, and we'll get more into that later. But overall, the total expenditures that we're proposing is $36.9 million. As you can see in the pie chart on your PowerPoint, half of that is General Fund. That is our biggest fund for the city. And then about a quarter piece of the pie is our Water and Sewer Fund, and it goes down from there. Splosh Funds, Sanitation Fund is also one of our other large funds and self-funded. So, that's just kind of the overall picture of our city budget. This slide shows the increase from last year to right now, the proposed 21 budget. So, the green column shows the 2020 budget as amended. I've brought y'all amendments throughout the year. So that green column and what you see listed as a 2020 budget in your book is the amended budget that we've worked on this year. So then the blue column on this chart shows you the proposed budget. Now, with some changes we've added this week, we do show a 13% increase in the General Fund expenditures compared to last year. Water and Sewer is a 4% increase compared to last year, and Sanitation is a 3% increase compared to last year. So just some kinda high-level notes for the revenues. This budget is showing, that we're showing you has a 6.25 millage rate. Remember that we advertised a 6.5. We've budgeted a 6.25 millage rate, and Tom will talk more about millage tomorrow. Part of the delay with the budget is, you know, we don't know what's necessarily gonna come, happen next year. And particularly with our facilities that were closed this year, at least for part of the year, we lost revenue on that. So when we look forward at next year was, you know, we were not entirely sure how to budget for revenue in that arena for next year. So, in the end, we did add back 50% of recreation revenue. So we're hoping for 50% participation throughout the year. And we included 40% of the Pine Mountain Gold Museum revenue. And that 50% and 40% of what we budgeted last year. We also have in our revenue 100,000 LCI grants that we were awarded a few months ago. And this budget does not have rate increases for Water and Sewer and Sanitation at this point. Okay, some items in the expenditures sections that I wanted to point out. This budget, we do, did include a $100,000 contingency in the council's budget. We kept all the employees that we had this year, so we didn't show any layoffs or furloughs in this budget. And with that, we didn't have to pay out any unemployment insurance, so none of those things are in this budget. We've continued improvements to salaries so that we can continue hiring and retaining good employees, and continuing the maintenance that we've been doing the past couple of years for current facilities. So we have quite a bit of that in this budget. With COVID, we lost our inmate crews, and so we've had to add temporary employees, which is more costly than the inmate crews. So we have budgeted for temporary employees for, for instance, grounds, the grounds maintenance. We have temporary employees working for us this year to help with mowing and things. Also, so in the revenue side, we show the LCI grant of 100,000. Well, I'm showing the expenditure side of that, which is 120,000. And so the 20, the extra 20,000 is what our match is for that. And I'm just giving y'all kinda the highlights at this point. We'll get more into the detail soon. Another one I wanted to point out is, so over the last five years, we have paid 50,000 to Carol Tomorrow every year. Well, the end of our five years is up. So we have one more quarter that falls into the next fiscal year. So we'll be paying 12,500 for Q4 of 2020. And then we haven't included any more. So, just wanted to point that out. We also divided up, this is more of a, kind of an accounting thing, but we divided up Recreation so we could, I guess, have some more understanding of how that department functions and how the money works out. So, in the past, we've had Recreation Admin and Athletics all in one group, and all the programs too. And at one point, we had split out the events, but then we moved most of the events to Main Street. So that, splitting that out didn't really work out the way I expected it to. So we've done a better division this year in this budget. So we have a department or division for Recreation Admin, Recreation Athletics, and then Recreation Events and Programs. So that'll look different this year, where you'll see big percentage changes in some departments, or you'll see one that had no activity in the previous few years. That is where that came from. We split it up a little bit better. So then we can see, how is Athletics doing? How is Events and Programs doing? Tom has been working with Charlie and Nick to come up with a comprehensive list of all the building and grounds maintenance projects that need to be done within the city. And so we were able to plug those numbers in yesterday as part of what is driving our big increase in the General Fund. So $675,000 in projects for those items that are included in the General Fund. Some of them are maintenance, some of them are capital, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Also, we've added the Butterballs renovation for $1 million. We don't have anywhere else for that to come out of, so it's in the General Fund as well. And then we've also added Punkin Town Engineering. So this is just the engineering piece, it's not the construction piece, but we've added 120,000 for that. Okay. So at this point, I wanted to get into more detail with the Personnel section. So overall, our personnel for the whole city is 11 million, 11.4 million. Last year was 11.1 million, so we've had a 3% increase in that. If you look at the pie chart, you can see the majority of personnel is in General Fund. And we do have a significant amount in the Water Sewer Fund. So in this budget, we have added two positions. We've upgraded four positions, but we have removed two positions as well. The two positions that were added, one was in the General Fund, and this is a Maintenance Tech for the Building and Fleet Department. So, he needed help anyway, and now we've added a bunch of additional projects that I just mentioned. So this, that 53,000, that is the fulling cost. So that is salary, estimated insurance, and taxes and things. And then the other position we have added is a Crew Leader for Distribution and Collection. So that 60,000 is all in. That's the salary, insurance, and taxes and things. So, that third, adding that Crew Leader would give this department three Crew Leaders, so he could have three individual crews. I think he wants to have one to do water, one to do sewer, and one to do proactive maintenance type stuff. So, you know, bulking up these crews because we've, you know, we've done a better job of maintaining things in the past couple of years. There's more work to do. As I mentioned, we have removed two positions. So over the last couple of years, we've added a Park Ranger position, well, two Park Ranger positions, which have never been filled. So what we're proposing is to take those out for a savings of $47,000. And then, I should've reworked this slide, but two of the upgrades we wanna make is to change those two Park Rangers to Program Assistants. When we talked to Courtney in the Recreation Department, what he was describing for what he wanted as Program Assistants, you know, somebody to be there late after hours and lockup and things, those were kinda the things we wanted the Park Ranger to do. So when we talked more about it, it made more sense to make those Park, make the Park Rangers become Program Assistants. So that's what we proposed here.
So these are not new hires? These are, are they part-time?
Yeah.
So these are two part-time Program Assistant positions?
Yes.
And they would be new hires? They are not currently on staff?
Correct.
Okay.
One of my operational issues is having buildings open at night with nobody there from the staff, or on the weekend, or whenever. It's just not healthy, and we gotta do something. But we have people at the Civic Center, Powell Park, and Goldust regularly at night and on the weekend, either classes, rentals, or whatever. And we're just, we just don't have enough people to cover it all. So, two part-timers would help move us in that direction.
Okay.
Okay. The other two upgrades on this slide, the first one is IT Technician. So this was a request last year, but the pay is too low for him to hire someone that he feels like he can trust and be a good addition to our team. So we're proposing to increase the pay. So that, it's still a part-time position, but we're increasing the pay for that position. So the cost on that is $7,000. And then lastly, we have a request to upgrade a part-time Library Assistant to a full-time Library Assistant. So that's what you see there. That 29,000 is to make that person a full-time position. So you're adding the hours at the current rate, but also you're adding insurance and taxes and things. So that, that is the addition to what the person, what that position is already costing us at a part-time position. So that is the addition. All right. Additionally, in this budget, we have Phase 3 of the Salary Study. So in 2018, the Council hired a firm to come in and do a Salary Study. They looked at every position and compared it to other cities that were comparable in size, or cities that we would compete with in the area to hire people. So they brought back the list of what everybody should be making, and it wasn't necessarily based on the, we were trying to true up or get the, the actual pay structure to the right place. So we've done two phases, one in 2018. That was, that was the first big one that we did, and that affected almost, I think it was everybody but six employees, their salary was increased. Last year, we did Phase 2. That was still a decent amount of employees that were affected. Now we're down to, I don't know, 20 or less employees that still have an amount to be trued up. And so this is Phase 3, in order to fix the pay structure. We also have Cost of Living Adjustments. 100,000 is about what it costs for a 1.5 COLA for everybody that's not getting at least 1.5% in that Salary Study. So that's similar to what we did last year. We had the Phase 2 of the Salary Study, and then we also had a COLA for anybody that didn't get at least 1.5% with the Salary Study. All right, Christmas Pay. Currently, we have 53,000 in the budget. That is $300 for every full-time employee, and 150 for every part-time employee. Or something we can discuss is, what is your philosophy on that? Do you wanna keep it out of the operating budget? Or is it something that Council would like to consider to use our self-funded savings towards a Christmas Pay? Do you wanna discuss that?
So she's asking for some feedback, if anybody has any. My memory is that last year, when this came up, it came up outside of the budget season, and the discussion amongst the Council was that if this was gonna be done, that it should be in the budget. So they are asking for some guidance here from Council, if anyone has an opinion on whether or not to include this in the budget.
Is, is there any issue used?
I'm sorry?
Is your mic on? Oh.
You say what?
I say included.
Included in the budget. She says she would like to see it in the budget.
Coming out of the General Fund or coming out of insurance savings?
Which one is more expedient?
Is there any issue using, yes, it's on, I just need to pull it a little closer. Using insurance money for a Christmas bonus, I mean, it's
There may not be any.
Yeah, we might wanna keep that insurance money off the side. We might have a bad year.
Yeah, we're, we had such a good first year that we're not, let me see if I put this in perspective. So we, let's say that in the first year that we, we banked $600,000. Well, our total exposure in the second year was $1,008,000, let's say. And unlike the first year, where we budgeted 100% of our maximum exposure, in the second year, we only budgeted 90%. So our maximum exposure in the second year was about $180,000, but we had $600,000 in the bank. So we could have several bad years in a row and still have the cash to make up that 10% that we're not budgeting. And according to Wendell, what we should see is a five-year cycle. So we have a really good year, a really bad year, and several mediocre years. That would be a typical five-year cycle for health claims. We just happened to hit the really good year in the first year. But in our second and third year, we haven't seen much savings. So I think we're seeing the mediocre years, and we've, we've inched up to what, is there a seven-something or eight-something?
We're close to eight.
Yeah, so we're, so we're, you know, we've, we've maybe accumulated almost 200,000 more in a couple of years, but you can see there's not much, you know, in growth compared to that first year.
We haven't had that bad year yet, so we
We're due. So you figure in the next year or two, we're gonna get popped.
So we should not use up our reserve.
Well, if, if we were to spend 50,000 of the 60, and our maximum exposure's 200,000 or less, even if we have that bad year and we eat 200,000 of it, you know, we still got, you know, $550,000 left, if we're starting at eight.
But, part of the, the reduction in savings were other things that we did with the money to benefit the employees. We changed the co-pays, and we gave in Fitbits and stuff like that. So that, that ate into some of the savings we would've seen if we hadn't done, if we had left everything the same.
We spent 20 on Fitbits? Yeah, we, we spent 20,000 on Fitbits.
And I don't have a problem with that. I wear one, so, you know, and not a city one, but I don't have a problem with that. I just say, you know, the picture is a little bit different because we use some of that money for, to help the employees with co-pays and things like that. My, my question was back in, the technicalities, is this savings, it's, it's undesigned? Are there no restrictions on what it's used for?
It's our money.
No legal restrictions?
Right.
It's just money out there, we can, okay.
Yeah.
We're just keeping up with it because we want to see it internally. It's not being regulated in any way. We choose how to regulate that money. So we can do with it whatever we choose to. We should just use our own judgment when we do it.
My thinking about this, using the self-funded and why it relates to the Christmas Pay is, to me, that would give us an additional carrot to encourage the staff to use the insurance plan wisely. Because my thinking is, we all, we, we would agree to some maximum amount as, as the Christmas bonus. So let's say that 53,000 is the maximum, and we, let's say that we split that 50/50 with the savings in the plan. So we would have to have a year where we saved at least 106,000 in order for the employees to get a $50,000 Christmas bonus, right? But if we save less than 106,000, then, then the 53,000 number would drop, right? So it gives the employees some skin in the game, whereas right now, like almost everybody else, there's not a consequence to misusing the plan, either individually or corporately. So in most health insurance plans, there's no cost consciousness. There's no shopping like you would for a car. When we go to the doctor, it's like, whatever, what do you charge? You're not only not cost comparing, you're not even aware of the cost, period. Or, or another situation that comes up is you go to the doctor, and the doctor sends out lab work to a facility that's not in our plan, and it costs four times more, right? Or you go in for imaging. If you do it at the hospital, it could be 10 times more expensive than the imaging center. Well, right now, we don't have a good mechanism to encourage the good behavior or penalize the bad behavior. So at least this would give us the beginning of some kinda corporate, you know, carrot to encourage that. See what I'm saying? We've still got a long, long way to go to educate, because we're still learning where the gotchas are. But we know that lab testing and imaging are two of the places where there's a huge disparity between where you go and what you pay.
The concept of, of doing that actually is appealing to me. The problem, I think, lies in that we don't have any guidelines like that. We have no way to advise the employees right now to be able to do that in a way that they can be effective. If, if the Council chooses to put this in, in the budget, or to leave it for another day to look at, I have no, I'm not gonna have any concern with that, and, but how it gets paid for. If you're gonna tie it to the Wellness Program, which is similar to what you're talking about, I actually like that idea. But we'd have to have some guidelines, some benchmarks, so that they would understand how to handle that. So I think you could look at that, but I have no problem with it coming out of the General Fund either, if that's what the Council chooses to do. I think the concern was last year that it showed up sort of at the last minute. It was an unbudgeted item. And then we ended up doing nothing for the employees, which didn't seem like a good option either. So, does anybody else have any comments?
I just wanna say, I like, I too also like the idea of tying it in with the insurance savings. But I think when it comes to informing or educating the employees, most of the time, I think an employee or anybody, when I go to the doctor, my doctor says, "Go across the hall and go get this test done." I don't ask the doctor, "Okay, is there a cheaper way to do this?" And, you know, I think a lot of folks just don't realize that you don't have to go across the hall, 'cause an MRI here or down the street is the same. You're just, but the price could be different. So I would like to see some efforts on educating the employees, not just on their options, but also in making sure they're aware that, yeah, if you want a holiday Christmas bonus at the end of the year, you're gonna have to make, you and your family are gonna have to make an effort to be educated on what your options are, and have a conversation with your doctor, say, "Well, doc, do I really have to go to LabCorp, or can I go to Quest?" That kinda thing, so. My only other concern though is, so our maximum exposure on the self-funded insurance is $200,000, and we have approximately, is that what, that's what you said earlier?
It's, it's 2 million.
It's 2 million, okay.
But we, we insure that.
We have stock gap insurance.
Right, we have umbrella, we have umbrella on the whole plan. We're only budgeting 90% of it. That's our exposure, right?
7%.
And so if we do have some horrific year, that would essentially wipe out, no?
It would take out 200 grand.
Why, where's the 200 grand number come from then?
10%, of 200, 2 million.
I see, okay.
So the actuary at the beginning of, before the year starts says, you know, "Here's your census, this is what we think you're gonna spend, we think it's gonna be 2 million," and that's Claims and Admin. And so, we look at that and say, "Well, we don't think we're gonna hit the max. We're gonna budget 90% of that, so we'll budget 1,008,000 instead of 2 million," right? Well, that helps the General Fund, that helps Water and Sewer, 'cause we're not putting it in the budget to begin with. But our umbrella coverage is for 2 million. So anything over 2 million, the umbrella pays, which we've never had happen. But if we happen to go all the way to 2 million, we're gonna, the city is gonna pay that 200,000 in addition to the budget.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
But it would come out of this.
The savings.
Right. So it would eat that 800,000 up-down to 600,000.
I see that.
And that should happen once, here in the next two or three years, if the cycle, you know, proves to be true.
We have it, is that insurance in here anywhere?
It's actually gonna be covered in the PowerPoint next.
Yes.
On, I, I think, I think taking it out of the Insurance Fund is probably a good thing because it will address all of the concerns and all of the complaints about Water and Sewer paying a Christmas bonus after the rates being raised, and they're saying, "You raised my rate so you can pay a bonus to employees." That, that solves that problem. My other comment is, you said 50/50, and you, you said 106,000, 50% is 53. What if it was 200,000 savings? Is it still 50/50, or do you put limits on that?
I would think you'd put a cap on the max that the, that the employee would get. But that's just me talking. I mean, y'all haven't had this conversation, and you really haven't had a chance to think about it either. So you'd have to think about it, but 53,000, this happens to be what a 301.50 bonus would cost us. And that's, you know, that's reasonable. When I was in Faribault, what we did one year was we did a 300 at Christmas time, and then, I've told you that we would do a mid-year review, and if we had a really good first six months, which was most of our rev, is probably three-fourths of our revenue came in the first six months, 'cause we were on the same year, we did another $300 bonus in June, right? Because we were having a good year. And that's the thing that I think is one of the disconnects in the government, is there's not a relationship between how you're performing and compensation, right? You go to work for a government, you do a good job, you get paid. You do a bad job, you get paid. You come to work every day, you get paid. You don't come to work every day, you get paid. You know, I mean, there's, you know
That's where the merit comes in.
Yeah, just no, no, no government does that well, you know, because governments don't have the ability to bonus. In fact, we shouldn't call it a bonus. We call it an incentive, because really, in Georgia, a government giving a bonus is, I think, illegal, so.
Well, it doesn't say bonus in, on here anyway.
I say it though, and I shouldn't.
Yeah, okay. I under, so I think there's a consensus that we like, whether or not it ends up in this budget, I don't know yet, but we like the idea of it being tied to some type of a performance. I like the idea very much, and I, I think I hear that from a majority on the Council. So let's go ahead and move on, but we, we will come back to this as we get a little closer to adopting a budget.
Okay. All right, self-funded insurance. Thank you for segueing into that, Tom. All right, so if you look in your All right, so if you look in your, your budget workbook, it's page ninety shows the expenditure side of that fund.
What page is that?
Page ninety. All right, so as we've discussed, this year, we have, it's almost two million, one point nine five million dollars in expense for the whole plan. Of that dollar amount, five hundred and fifty-two thousand of that is administrat-, administrative. Remember, we pay a third party to administer that for us, there's other components of it. There's some, um, other insurances that we have that cover us, that's included in there. The wellness piece, we have a, like a prescription company that helps us get the best prices on the prescriptions, that sort of thing. That's what's in the administrative, and also wellness. So when we do, uh, blood tests, or the, the Fitbit costs, that would all be included in there. Now, this, the, the box on the right, the one point four million estimated claims, that's what Tom was referring to. The actuaries come back to us and say, "This is what you are at risk for losing." Now, the bottom one is the total. So they tell us, this year, they told us one point five six million was the amount that you could possibly lose when it comes to the actual claims. So we budget ninety percent of that, which is how we got the one point four. So that green box, where I'm pointing to those two purple boxes, the difference between these two is a hundred and sixty thousand in the savings that remained in the general fund, the water and sewer fund, because we didn't budget that in the departments as far as insurance goes.
Yeah, ignore my comment about the two hundred thousand, it's one sixty, because we're budgeting a hundred percent of administrative, right? Because it doesn't float. It's a per person, per month fixed set of numbers.
So any other questions?
We had no budget amendments in this fund, uh, last year, right?
Correct.
And we're actually, the, the percent change looks like it's going to, that was the year before. That, uh, looks like we're actually going to be budgeting five percent less in this fund this year.
Yes, so we met with our, we met with Wendell a month ago, a couple weeks ago. Anyway, he's brought us some different ideas, possibly using a third-party administrator, and I think that'll be coming to you at the next meeting. But with that, he was proposing that we'll have some cost savings, so that's the way we budgeted it.
Okay.
On that page, we would add an item for the Christmas thing, Christmas money. Is that what we do?
Did it show up somewhere?
Right.
Yes, it would come out of this fund.
Okay.
Or is that wrapped up in wellness?
Whatever we called it, it'd be a line item expense in that fund.
All right, any other questions, uh, on the self-funded insurance plan? All right.
I'll give you, for instance, something else we could do. Let's say that we wanted everybody to have a gym membership. It would, it'd get paid out of that. Let's say it costs ten bucks per employee per month. That's where it would go.
And we actually have talked about that a little bit, too. Okay, you want to go ahead, Sarah?
Moving on, let's talk capital requests. Here in our budget, as far as vehicles go, we have included six police vehicles for a total of three hundred and twenty-four thousand. That is the full expense, that's the vehicle, that is the cameras, the laptops, the radios, the lights, sirens, all that. So that is all in cost for six vehicles, three hundred and twenty-four thousand. The next item is three pickup trucks. So we have found the larger pickup trucks, for instance, like an F-350 seems to work better for the crews. So those, those are actually three of the bigger trucks. And then, the last vehicle that we have in this budget is an ATV for the north plant, for eleven thousand.
Well, let's, let's stop just for a minute. So on the vehicles, on the police vehicles, in the detail, on page twenty-five, you're showing vehicles with laptops and in-car video systems, but in parentheses, you have six. But you have this listed three times.
I'm showing the, in that detail, I'm showing how it's being paid for. So with police cars, we're paying partly Douglas County Splas, partly Carroll County Splas, and partly general fund.
Right, but you have a six. Is this how much is coming out of each of these funds to fund just the six cars? Because it looks like six, six, and six.
Yeah, it looks like eighteen. It looks like eighteen.
No, sorry.
Yep.
It is, the three of those add up to that three hundred and twenty-four thousand, which covers the six cars.
Okay, yep. But it doesn't break out to correlate with our PowerPoint to make it look as though you add those three together and go. Okay, so that's the three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Eighty-eight thousand of that is coming out of Douglas County Splas. Ninety-four thousand four hundred two is coming out of Carroll County Splas, and a hundred and forty-one thousand is coming out of general fund for a total of three hundred and twenty-four thousand for six new police cars with laptops. Okay, go ahead to the pickup trucks.
Okay, so again, that's three pickup trucks, those are extended cab, like an F-350-type truck, and then an ATV for the north plant. So total vehicle purchases, four hundred and seventy-three thousand.
So think about what six police cars is when you have forty officers.
Well, we've been buying about five cars a year, so we should be getting close to everybody having a new car by now.
We still have a couple.
Not yet, I mean, you got to do it for seven.
For?
This is my fourth year.
And we've done it every year.
I think so. So we're more than halfway there.
But by the time you get through it, then you start replacing.
By the time we get through it, it's all cars.
Yeah, well, but now, some just came out, they're ready now, five of them?
Five or six, and we should have them in a month.
Okay, and then this will be for next year.
And then this is next year, which we don't know what delivery will be like. But you can see what a huge impact on the fleet we've had. What you don't see is what that does to the garage. Because when we buy six a year, and we're pushing the older ones out the bottom, what that does is takes that load off of the, the couple of guys that we have available to work in the garage, so that they're not having to take an eighty thousand, or a hundred thousand, or a hundred and twenty thousand dollar car, or mile car, and keep it running, because we're cycling them. So what we've done has been really, really effective. Even though we're not there yet, you know, we're more than halfway there.
If we're budgeting six cars with forty officers, that means we, we expect the car to last about seven years. Is that, is that average?
Are we getting seven years out of a car?
No, I don't know that we average that, plus we're, you know, we're losing at least one or two a year to wrecks.
So.
So we're not doing too much, is my point.
A car lasts five years for forty officers, that means we need to get eight a year.
Right.
Plus wrecks.
Plus damages.
Yeah, it's, we're, it, it's a tough, it's a tough cycle to be in, but we're making progress. We just got to keep doing it.
And that's another reason to not pay it out of Splas. If it's just going to become part of our budget every year, once we get everybody with a new car, and then we're going to start over again, then we don't want to rely on Splas for those vehicles, if this is going to be part of our regular budget. So it'd be good to get away from Splas on those.
Yeah, that's another long-range goal.
Yep.
Is to be a hundred percent general fund, so that if we ever lose either one or both of the Splas, you know, our public safety is covered.
We're not on the proverbial river with no paddle. So that's, that's all the vehicles and the, this total of four hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Where's the ATV, is it, what page is it on?
It's at the north plant, so if you go down to the sewer section, page twenty-seven, says John Deere Gator for north plant.
Okay, that's the ATV.
Twenty-seven in the book.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we approved that two city council meetings ago.
They had one this year for the west plant, I think. All right. So the next slide shows the equipment that we're, we have in this budget. The first item is ten radios for the police. Then we have three body cameras, also for the police, and then six laptops for the police. So the radios that we had are no longer serviceable, so they've been trying to do a few a year. I think we did about that many the last year. So, trying to get the, the old ones out, since they will not be serviceable any longer, and give them new ones. Next is a pump for the pond at Pine Mountain Gold Museum for five thousand. And then the streets department has requested a salt spreader for ten thousand. And also below that is a sign machine for forty thousand, so that we could start making our own signs. And then, lastly, Douglas County Fire and EMS, that is the amount that we have to pay out of our Splas towards their capital projects.
Tell me about that sign machine.
So what Bobby is telling me is that a seventy-dollar stop sign is a fifty, a fifteen-dollar material cost. And we have a big backlog of sign replacements, because it's just too expensive to do. And so what he's proposing is that we bring that in-house, so that we can make them ourselves.
Okay. Uh, and it, seventy dollars, did you say seventy dollars versus fifteen dollars in materials? Okay, so there are other reasons to have this. I don't know what the backlog is of signs, but I can tell you that, uh, a few years ago, we looked at upgrading and updating all of the signage in Mirror Lake, and we were looking at a substantial cost there, maybe in the two hundred thousand dollar range. Uh, I think that we decided not to move forward on that because of it, but obviously, if we're able to do it for a fraction, uh, of that, we might end up doing that. It's one of the reasons why some of our enforcement, uh, you know, runs into a problem over in Mirror Lake, so. All right, anybody else have any questions on this, uh, capital equipment?
Do we have somebody who could, that's knowledgeable in operating a machine like this, or on staff? Or is this going to be a?
Just Bobby, we'd have to have somebody trained to use it.
This is all the signs, the street signs, uh, stop signs, yield signs, all the signs in the city.
Yeah, and we, and we have an issue out there that we don't talk about, and that is that we've allowed a couple of neighborhoods to build
Their own signs, yeah.
With, with non-standard signs. I don't think that was a good idea.
Let's get back to Montahan's question. Er, is this a training issue or a new hire issue for the equipment?
Exactly.
Maintenance, do you know? Does anybody know?
I don't, I don't think that's significant. It's the labor's.
Well, the labor, but you have to put it all into a formula to determine whether or not the seventy dollars actually was a better deal. Because I'm not sure it's going to be fifteen now, it could be thirty or thirty-five. And at that point, I'm not sure I'm.
There's a guy that's making the signs, either one also the one that goes out and puts them up.
Our street crews who puts them up.
But it'll be a member of the street crew who is trained to operate this machine.
Right.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions on this capital equipment? We'll, we'll probably end up coming back to this, maybe talk to Charlie. All right, let's go ahead.
All right, total equipment, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Next are the side improvements. Oops. So the first item is a splash pad and pavilion at Goldust. So the last couple of years, we have allocated some Splas money to do some serious renovations at Goldust. But now there seems more to focus plan. We had a hundred thousand dollars for a splash pad, but now we have a much better understanding of what that actually would entail. So what we're budgeting is six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That would be a splash pad and a pavilion restroom building. Neck, like, between the new playground equipment and the splash pad, we'd have a pavilion and a restroom building. So six hundred and eighty-five thousand, that is Splas. And then we have Pine Mountain improvements, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. You know, y'all have seen some of Wesley's drawings and ideas on what he wants to do out there. So this is money to go towards that, and that is all Douglas County Splas. So, so those top two items are Splas. The next item is street improvements for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Since we're doing a big project right now on streets, we don't necessarily expect that we'll do another big street improvement next year. However, we have to apply for the L-MIG program every year, and so this would be the L-MIG portion that we're getting. So this is L-MIG money, um, so I want to, I went ahead and go ahead and budgeted for that, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We also have some traffic calming money for fourteen thousand, we've been budgeting that for a couple of years.
Okay, what are we doing with the traffic calming? What's it going to, what are we doing? Humps, speed humps? Okay, because we've, for years now, we've talked about slowing it down on South Dogwood, and that, nothing's ever occurred, other, other than they put that machine out there for eastbound traffic. It still didn't slow the traffic down.
That's probably a question for Bobby, though, because when that came up before, there, there were some indications that we weren't allowed to put a speed hump on the road because of the slope, uh, and the speeds.
So how do you control traffic out of control on a slope road?
I'm sure as you approach those stop signs, maybe you could put those little, you know, I don't know, but that's always been a, a speed issue there. Uh, let me ask you this on the traffic calming. So you're asking for fourteen thousand dollars in the budget, which I have no problem with, but what about the money that was left over last year? Because we budgeted it last year, and we didn't spend a dime of it, right?
Right, it rolls forward.
So we're just going to roll it over, but we're not going to add it on top of this, right? Because if we are, I don't really see the need to do that.
Okay.
All right, so let's not do that, uh, because what was it last year, seventy-five hundred, eight thousand?
I think last year we did fourteen, and it was seven thousand the year before. So we've actually, I think we've accumulated a little pot of money for traffic calming.
All right, let's just roll over last year's budget, since we didn't use it.
Okay.
Question on the, uh, street improvements. On the detail on page twenty-six, it's for the L-MIG portion, it includes streets and sidewalks. I mean, is that a, do we have a sidewalk plan? As you all know, I've been pushing for infill sidewalks in some of the neighborhoods in my ward, and I thought maybe we could use some Splas money with that. Uh, I didn't know if that's included in this, or is this for something else?
It's really just, that's an old description that I copied down, so it's really just street improvements.
We've only used it for streets, but we could.
We had a sidewalk plan, did we complete that sidewalk plan?
That predates me. I think that was the former mayor, when he was, seemed like he, he did some sidewalk stuff that became famous.
Yeah, I believe that dates back to two thousand and fourteen, but I don't think we've done much sidewalks.
Not since I've been here.
Not lately, but we did do a bunch in one year.
Well, that's the one you're talking about. Uh, it got done down, uh, Dogwood and.
South Carroll.
Yeah, there was a good amount of sidewalks that got put in, maybe two hundred thousand dollars in sidewalks.
But we didn't complete the plan, because we had a lot more sidewalks planned out.
I think we should probably be taking a look at that. There are a number of places where we should, uh, add sidewalks. Maybe y'all can pull that up. I've never seen that plan.
Like, for example, for, for example, in Charleston Place and Augusta Woods, for example, I mean, you have side, you have a house with a sidewalk, and then two houses that don't have sidewalks, you just have an island of sidewalk. Uh, and particularly in Charleston Place, the sidewalk is very narrow, so I don't, I'm not exactly advocating that we tear it all out and upgrade it, but I would like to see some, to complete the connectivity, and, uh, you know, maybe we could pull that up, Carroll County Splas, if we haven't already extinguished those funds.
Seems like we would have talked to the, the developer who's finishing that out for some of that. That's what we did in Waters Mist. We got D.R. Horton to fill in, uh, some of those sidewalks that were skipped like that.
I think we did it in Southwoods, didn't we?
Southwoods, I'm pretty sure we did the same thing. Here's the thing, those should be part of the development plan, obviously. Uh, and that should have happened way back when, but we run into this all the time now, and we're trying to. Now, going forward, you can't get this done, you can't get a subdivision without agreeing to put these sidewalks in.
Absolutely.
Uh, but I think Danny is probably talking more about. Uh, but I think Danny is probably talking more about closer in downtown areas that have been developed for fifty-plus years that really should have some sidewalks on. Is that primarily what you're talking about?
And also, we went, we went further with it too. We expanded it to a six-foot sidewalk to use as a golf cart path. So we could be golf cart friendly city.
Interesting. I'd like to see that plan. That's not what happened on South Carroll Road, or?
No, it didn't. It, it is on Daniel though.
Is it?
It's expanded to six foot on Daniel.
Okay, I don't know anything about it. Not a bad idea, though.
On the splash pad pavilion and restroom, does that require the relocation of the sewer line that, uh, Vicky was proposing to, to take sewer to the snack shack because it's on, and then route it back underneath the, the new parking lot area?
No, we, when we master plan Goldust, we picked this site to use the infrastructure that's out there. It's just the, the existing concession restrooms on the septic tank.
Yeah.
Do we have any renderings on this splash pad and pavilion? Okay, good. I'd like to be able to see that. I, it feels like I've seen them before, but this is the first time I've seen this price tag. Well, not today, but in this budget season.
No, it's, it's new. This is, when did we hire Bobby and Callister? Six weeks ago?
Yeah.
So I mean, we've been working on it last month.
Okay. All right, any other questions on these site improvements? One, one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Let's move on to, uh, building improvements.
All right, this is a big one. Two slides worth. So the first one is something we've been talking about for years. This would be the HVAC system at the Goldust gym. The last estimate we got was two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to do that. We're also proposing HVAC at Goldust, the admin side of the building, thirty thousand. And then HVAC at City Hall, thirty thousand. HVAC at customer service, which is ten thousand. Uh, distribution and collection, you know, the new site that they've been putting together at the old West Plant. So we had budgeted money this year for the, they, they have the trailer in place, and we budgeted money this year, I guess, for the storage building. But when it came time to put the storage building in place, there's grading work that needs to be done. Anyway, that's, that has become a serious undertaking. So that is for that. And also Nick sent me a quote, um, for HVAC, I guess, at that site as well. So two hundred fifteen thousand, we hope will be enough to finish out that office and storage building for distribution and collection. And then the next item is
Does that include that HVAC work?
Yes.
The two hundred fifty, okay.
Yes. The next item is some work to be done at the old library. So it's, um, it's being leased out currently. But with COVID, they are not, not everybody is in there right now. Are you wanting to do this now or later? Well.
If the change over.
Okay, so when their lease is over, we have some things that we need to take care of. Um, one of which is AC in that building, but also the plumbing, um, is problematic there, but it would require tearing out flooring in the building and then some concrete outside the building. So this thirty-two thousand dollars would cover that.
Well, so let's go back. Tom, does this need to be in the twenty, twenty-one budget? Because that lease will not end. They haven't even moved any dirt on their new building.
It, it's possible.
Okay.
I talked to one of the guys from Southeast this week, and they've downsized their plan from eighty thousand to sixty thousand square feet roughly. But they're doing the engineering, so.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're, like, a lot of what we're talking to now, guys are trying to finish engineering. And a couple of them may do like a late fall groundbreaking, but most of them are probably looking at late February, early March to actually start digging. Just because no, very few of these are gonna try to grade during the winter, so.
Okay.
Okay, the HVAC at City Hall, we don't have air conditioning at City Hall, or is this just replacing the equipment or what?
We do, but it's, hasn't been working, hadn't been keeping up. Well, in our, in our finance committee meeting, wasn't it really warm in there?
You have more than three people together and you heat up.
It's warm in there today. It's set on seventy-four, but it's seventy-seven degrees, so I'm assuming the
The equipment's not working well, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
It just runs.
And the way, just the way that it's set up doesn't work well for us. We'll, we'll have one side of the big room out front where you've got people that are hot, and they're turning the controls down on that side, and then I've got somebody on this side with a space heater running all in the same room, which, you know, and then the unit freezes up and
Okay.
It doesn't work well.
Equipment's worn out.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
The last item there is Butterball's renovation. So at this point, cost estimate is a million dollars, so we have put that in there. Coming out of the general fund.
So Tom, talk to us a little bit about what a million dollars gets us.
Yes, please.
So we did, um, we did a bid back when Chris was here. And I guess low bid was in the four hundreds, remember, and then it, we went back and forth about whether the bids were legit and all that stuff, but so we have a pretty good idea of what that internal renovation would, would cost. And it looks to me like, in order to do the site and the exterior, plus you got the duplex, that you're, you're gonna spend a million dollars without even having to think about it. And that assumes that we can do a road diet on Montgomery and put parallel parking out there, coming down the hill from Chiefs. And even if we do that, we're gonna have fourteen parking spaces at the most. So what I envision would be a drive-through window on the west end of the building. An entrance only from Montgomery. An exit only two places on seventy-eight. The one below, if you're familiar with the two buildings that sit beside the duplex, right, the auto repair place, and there was a, a title pawn or something, and it's something else now, but there's a driveway there. So we would tie into that. You'd have a, a right and a left exit there. And then closer to the red light, you'd have a right only. If you went through the drive-through, you'll only be able to exit west on seventy-eight. And then we would take the, the whole site that's not the drive-through lane and make it more like a park. So sod it, have outdoor seating, put trees back in there, 'cause we've taken down the trees that sat on the wall. You remember the wall that, that separated Butterball's from the duplex? That's where the, the drive lane would be. So we've taken those trees down. We've gotta put trees back in there, shade it. You know, give people a place to eat outside, and then we can put the visitor center on the east end, closest to the billboard, and then put some kind of food establishment that would use the drive-through on the west end.
What's, what's the drive-through for? What's, what you doing?
Window. Well, whether we do a coffee shop or, you know, a, a little bakery kind of place, or even something heavier. I do, it just, you don't have enough s- room to do a whole lot. I've talked to Jerry's about coming. Right, there and a little bit of space out there near the hospital, that, that sort of fits. You know, we'll see.
What will be done with the duplex?
Office.
How much would it cost to? I guess, I mean, you run a cost comparison on just demoing the duplex?
We could demo it, make it in the parking space.
And versus re- renovation, and are you, is there a cost benefit in renovating it?
I don't know about a benefit. It would just be cheap space relative to building something new.
So of, of the million dollars, though, I mean, could we save any of that by just demoing the duplex? And then you have more than fourteen parking spaces out there.
Yeah, you're not gonna get a lot more, but you'd get several.
How much would the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, do we have a need for that office space? Turning the duplexes into office space?
Yeah, we always need space, but.
Well, but I think it's a valid question, because if we have a need for that space, as opposed to having to build it or relocate that, you know, those offices somewhere else, maybe we do keep them. But if we don't have a need, just, it would be better. Maybe we tear them down, put parking up there, and it changes the, the potential use of the
The long term is for Avante to be vacated.
Right, but you don't have enough room with those duplexes to?
No, it would, that would only move Sharon and Janet and, and, uh, is it Shannon?
Shannon, yeah.
The new coordinator.
How many spaces you think we can get out of that, in additional spaces?
Just four, right?
But wouldn't
In the duplex?
Wasn't the original plan to move Sharon and Janet, and our Shan- Shannon now, into the actual Butterball's location?
Just Sharon.
Make that the welcome center? Okay, just Sharon.
Yeah, just Sharon.
So the office space at the duplexes would, would not be office space that we would run out to like a third party, where the DDA could lease it out?
I think we would use it. But yeah, I mean, you remember the plan back in the day was, the DDA was gonna do the renovation, and then they were gonna generate you know, revenue by leasing the building, and they're gonna pay us back and
Right, and then we do receive some income from the billboard on site too, right?
Who gets that income?
I've only seen it a time or two, and it's like a thousand dollars a year.
Where does it go?
I put it against their line of credit. So, you know, originally the city signed a four hundred fifty thousand dollar promissory note for Butterball's for what he was saying that they would, um, pay back.
But they never signed it, and we never turned over the money. But are you saying DDA don't own the billboard, but they're getting the cash flow from it?
I wanna say we were, we have recorded it, but out, in, in the last couple of years, I'm only seeing one or two thousand.
Okay. Uh, I'm concerned that there's three office spaces that we could possibly benefit out of the duplexes, but you just made it clear that one of those spaces is Sharon's. She would actually be in the main structure. So the other two, so we're keeping two duplexes or a duplex for two offices?
Well, two, two that I need, just, just to move that front part of
Because of the Avante?
Avante, but I mean, I've got all kind of people in Avante.
Yeah, well, we're actually looking at moving Bobby over to Avante. I mean, so the, the plan for removing or relocating Avante is not for sure imminent. It could be years down the road, and we could be looking at a municipal complex by that time. I would like to see a plan that probably does away with those duplexes. They may be something that's more headache than they're worth. Uh, I hate that it's only four parking spaces, but maybe something else can be done over there.
I hate that Butterball's is gonna be a welcome center. You can't even park a bus there, so if a load of people come through, wanna go to through the welcome center, you got no place to put it.
Well, maybe the, maybe that's what the duplexes could be. It could just be a bus parking lot. I don't know if it's large enough, or what the ingress, egress would look like, but I just, I don't know. I just, I never really understood the, the duplexes being involved in that plan from the beginning, so.
I almost feel like they're more of a liability myself.
I think they're just trying to use them, 'cause they were there.
Okay, so let's look at that as an option as well, if you don't mind. Let's move on to building improvements.
Okay.
Uh, page two.
Moving on. All right, we've had some trouble at the Main Street office in the Avante building with their sewer, and, um, we, we brought in several people to look at it, um, but Nick's actually budgeted five thousand to bring in an engineer to look at it, 'cause they have not been able to fix it. Um, that's in the operating side, but here we have, hopefully, what the repair would be, no more than this, twenty-five thousand to repair the sewer there. But that would require, you know, busting up concrete and all that and replacing it.
So that's the restrooms down in the actual Avante building?
The Main Street office.
Okay, does it have anything to do with the concession, the, the, the restrooms here at the, uh, amphitheater?
No.
Okay, so they're not impacted by that? All right, twenty-five thousand dollars on that.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, then the next five items are what we discussed with Charlie and Nick yesterday. These are the things that we've, some of the things we've recently added. I will point you to
Yeah, the detail. What page is that on?
Okay, page, starts on page twenty-four. So we have seventy-six thousand dollars in improvements at Goldust. So that starts at, so I'm in the Parks and Rec section on the detail. The third item, just below the air conditioner at Goldust, which we've already talked about. So, and I've tried to label what building they're at. So that, the first five items there in that group, build pavilion for seniors on backside of Goldust. Security fence around the maintenance building. Renovate the basketball concession stand, renovate bathrooms, and replace flooring in the fitness room. Those five items make up this improvements at Goldust line item.
So the renovate bathrooms at Goldust, this is inside the main facility?
Yes.
Forty thousand dollars for that?
Yes.
Last time I was in there, it needed some cushions and some new knobs on the shower. I didn't see forty thousand dollars, so.
Um, yeah, I think, I don't know about the showers, but the bathrooms they're referring to. Um, the next four items is Pal Park, and that's eighty thousand dollars. So what they're seeing needs to be done is a concession stand and restroom at Pal Park. Replacing the lobby flooring, renovate the bathrooms there as well, and updating all lights to LED, which includes the floodlights. So that's eighty thousand. Then we have two hundred twenty-five thousand at Vplex. So build a pavilion next to the playground. Install concrete pla- pads for the bleachers. And then I'm moving on to page twenty-five. Renovate this football scoreboard, new scoreboards for nine fields. Is that baseball? Baseball. Three new interest awnings for the Civic Center. Renovate the bathrooms in the Civic Center at Vplex as well. Update all lights to LED and install, well, two more items. Install fifteen-ton unit of the Vplex. It sounds like we already have the unit. This would be the installation piece. And then lastly, upgrade the network at Vplex. So, um, we just got this number yesterday, a hundred thousand dollars. So in order for us to be more visitor-friendly and to do, like, sports, needing a better
Scoreboards.
Yes, so that they would have Wi-Fi capability or be able to use Wi-Fi. We just don't have a very strong network out there. Um, do we even have Wi-Fi right now?
There is Wi-Fi out there, but there is, um, am, almost zero cellphone and, and cell data service there.
It's part of the reasons we have such a security issue out there with the maintenance building is the camera system without internet doesn't really do you a whole lot.
You have Wi-Fi out there, right?
Barely.
But it is, it is
Wi-Fi cameras work real well.
Yeah, it's just not enough bandwidth. So we're, we're gonna resolve that one way or the other in this improvement. And hopefully, we can do it for less than what Jim's thinking, but we won't know till we get into it.
All right, and then the last three items in that recreation section have to do with Fullerville. Build security fence around concession stand and restrooms, replace roof on concession stand and restrooms, and then add security gate at the footbread, footbridge at the lower parking section at Fullerville. For a total of thirty-four thousand at Fullerville. And then the last item on this slide is police department improvements for thirty-nine thousand. So the very next section on the detail on page twenty-five is the public safety section. So I'm gonna start about halfway down awnings. So they need to replace the awnings at the police department. They need new vinyl panels and window trim on the courthouse side. They need some flooring replacement. This would be in the detective's office and some of the other offices for the command staff and the other administrative, uh, so like the offices sides of the police department. And then lastly, they wanna replace one generator and then rebuild another generator. So those items add up to thirty-nine thousand at the police department.
My question is, um, being on the CVB board, we have talked about, um, kind of recreation tourism in Villa Rica. And so, to the extent that some of these Vplex improvements would, would be to promote recreation tourism, bring tournaments and stuff like that. And maybe this is a twenty-twenty-two thing, because we're not there yet. But could some of this stuff be paid for with the hotel motel tax, particularly the Vplex improvements?
With product development, yeah.
Okay, is that something that, I know we haven't got to the hotel motel tax budgeting yet, but is that something that we could just
It's possible, but we're not, we're not there yet, like you said.
Okay. Well, just something, maybe we can keep a note for twenty-twenty-two to kind of start, if we're, if we're pushing recreation tourism in the city, then maybe we can start kind of gearing some of these rec improvements to the extent that they're used, being used to attract, you know, baseball tournaments, sports tournaments and so forth to the hotel, you know, with hotel motel. Just, just a thought.
Okay.
Good point. Okay, any other questions on, uh, page two, building improvements? All right, that's two million, seventy-one thousand, the total of, of two of those, uh, those two pages. We'll go ahead and move on to request a We'll go ahead and move on to requested capital for water.
Alright. First one on here is the North Avenue Waterline Extension Project. We've been talking about this for a while. That's two point five million. This would be a Jifa project. So, next we have meters, water meters of three hundred seventy-five thousand. So that is a combination of sources. We have some Douglas County Splosh money. Um, I don't think we've been able to allocate any Carroll County Splosh money to that, cause we have so much other stuff we need to spend that on. So what isn't coming out of Douglas County Splosh for those meters is coming out of water and sewer fund. Next, we have, with all the dams in the city, we do have some serious improvements that need to happen there. So Pete is suggesting that we bring in an, um, engineer to design that improvement that needs, improvements that need to happen at the dams. Then we have the Connors Road Booster Pump Station. Needs a hundred thousand dollars of improvements there. And, um, in discussions yesterday, it came up that we need to replace three chemical tanks at the water plant for a cost of thirty-five thousand. And then they have one high-service pump drive that needs to be replaced for twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, so all of these requested capital funds are either coming out of Jifa, which is the vast majority of it?
Yes.
Some's coming out of Douglas County Splosh and the remainder is water and sewer picking up its own cost?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, uh, on water capital improvements, the capital request?
Is Georgia Safe Dams involved with any of these dams you're talking about improving?
I'm not sure.
I could hear you, Michael.
They inspect all of them.
Okay.
We've, we've got four-
Terrible to deal with. They're like dealing with Norfolk Southern.
We've got Paradise and Fashion and Cowan, which are the three impoundments that we pull water out of. And then Spring Lake, we're responsible for. And then the one that we're not is Mirror Lake. That's the HOA's responsibility. And then there's also a private dam at West Lakes, which is Liberty Pool. Familiar with that? You know where Beaver's Transmission is?
Yes.
So if you're going down Liberty, Beaver's is on the left. Those neighborhoods, there's like multiple neighborhoods that, that corporately call themselves West Lake. And there's a, there's a lake and a dam that that HOA is responsible for.
Okay.
So that's the, that, what is that, five, six? Six that I think are, are on our radar. Either we're repairing them or we know that the HOA is doing some repairs, one or the other.
Alright, any other questions?
Okay, can we just get an update on the Jifa? Cause when we were in Covington last week, I thought I heard in passing that we had some news on that, but I wasn't really clear what it was.
Alright, so we, we're applying for a, a program that would give us an interest rate break on the Jifa loan. And we weren't, we didn't qualify. But we were given two homework assignments that would get us there, and so we're working on those. One of them is for Pete, and that's, um, an educational component with our fats, oil and grease program. And then the one that I'm working on with Chris is the septic tank component of our system. So it looks like out of our, say, six thousand and something residential accounts, that about sixteen hundred roughly, or seventeen hundred are on, are, are septic customers, are septic operators instead of sewer customers. And about half of them are in the city and half of them are out of the city. So almost all of the water customers that we service that are not in the city limits are on septic. And so they want us to identify them and then tag how old the systems are. They want us to develop a plan for possibly adding them to our sewer system, because there's a life to all those systems and, and sometimes you can't refresh the drainage field because of the soil not working right. So, we have that situation going on with one commercial user on seventy-eight going toward Douglasville that's in an older building. Their septic field is failing. You know, they're trying to figure out how they can get on our system. So that, that will become more of a thing over time as, you know, as these systems get old. But those are the two things that we're, that we're, we've been tasked with that hopefully will get us over the hump and that'll save us one percent on the Jifa loan. It will lower our rate by one percent. A literal percent, not a percent of the rate, but you know, like if it's one point nine, it'd be zero point nine.
In other words, it's huge. And that's, that's the incentive for doing that.
Big money.
Okay, uh, any other questions on this? Okay, the next section is, uh, capital for sewer.
Yes. Alright, so the abbreviations here, WP is West Plant and NP is North Plant. So the first one is a million dollars. This is another Jifa project, uh, uh, West Plant Influent. Then we have less, West Plant Effluent Overflow Line for fifty thousand.
So y'all know the difference between Influent and Effluent? Cause I didn't.
In and out?
In and out, right. So the first, that first project is the old wet well where all, where most of the city sewer goes to before it goes in the plant is shot. And then the Effluent is where it comes out of the West Plant and we discharge into the creek. And we need to put in an overflow line there.
Alright. Next is West Plant Sand Filters. West Plant Constant Speed Pump, number four, for eighty-five thousand. So the West Plant has four bays for pumps, right? And they have three currently, so this would be adding a fourth pump for eighty-five thousand. Then we have the North Plant Belt Press for three hundred fifty thousand. Then we need a hundred and seventy-five thousand for lift station and manhole improvements. And then the I and I improvements, which is, um, inflow and infiltration into our system, a hundred thousand dollars to kind of seal those areas up. And then SCADA upgrades of forty-five thousand dollars. So total sewer is almost two million dollars. Um, we can take a break right now. We do have cookies and I think she passed out all your drinks, but we have cookies over here if anybody needs a snack or we can take a restroom break for a few minutes.
How in the world did you get through that that fast? Alright, are we?
We're taking a break.
We off?
Uh, can you kill it?
Yep, we're gonna take a break.
Uh, start back up. Uh, Sarah, I believe you're on, uh, are you still on, uh, Sewer Capital? Or are we moving on to Distribution and Collections?
Were there any other questions on Sewer?
Were there any questions, uh, from Council on Request of Capital for Sewer? Okay, let's move on.
All right.
Request of Capital for Distribution and Collections.
Okay, Distribution and Collection. So, in this year's budget, in the water and sewer side, we have, well, part of it might be out of Duke, I know part of it's out of Dukes County Splosts. Water and Sewer Pipeline of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So, like, for instance, the projects that Pete brought to you this year, Edge Road and the Highway seventy-eight project, those were not budgeted. We had budgeted the engineering in the previous year, but not the actual construction. This gives us an account to work with, um, for those types of projects, because we know they're coming. So, this is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for that. The next item is service lines for seventy-five thousand. So, I think Tom explained when we did the paving project that before that, we had replaced some service lines and meters. Um, so, you know, you have the, the main water line, but then the service lines that run towards the houses. So, we've been replacing those, um, and trying to be proactive about doing those roads before those roads are paved. So, um, this gives them, again, another pot of money to actively, proactively replace service lines in certain neighborhoods. The next item are pressure-reducing valve replacements. Um, in the past, we've budgeted about twenty-five thousand per year for them. Turns out that is nowhere near enough money. That might cover one. So, this gives them the opportunity, opportunity to do four or five around the city for that.
Where are these located?
Um, I-
Which one are we talking about?
Pressure, pressure-reducing valves.
Downtown.
Isolation valves?
Downtown.
All downtown?
I think so.
Okay. I shouldn't have gotten out of that. All right.
That was on the pressure-reducing valves. Now, the isolation valves?
Same thing.
Downtown?
Are those also downtown?
Seventy-eight and sixty-one mostly.
Okay.
One, one of Jimmy's great consternations is that when he has a leak, he can't turn the water off easily, because when we put the water lines in, we didn't put in isolation valves. And so, he, sometimes he'll spend, on a thirty-minute repair, three or four hours turning the water off.
Is, is your mic on? Maybe pull it a little bit closer.
So, it's, it's not unusual for him to have to turn off water, not just hundreds of feet away, but a mile away.
How many isolation valves are we putting in?
Uh, if we put in the cheaper valves, they're about fifteen hundred dollars apiece. But if we have to put it, put in, um, a valve without turning the water off, then they're like sixty-five hundred dollars. But hi- his issue is on, on a lot of the older part of downtown, they just didn't put valves in at all. And so, when he has a leak, let's say he has a leak, um, on seventy-eight near Rocky Branch at the high school, he might have to turn all the water off from sixty-one back, whereas you should have isolation valves, you know, every so many manholes, so that you're just cutting one little small segment of the water line off.
So, is he gonna, is he gonna go-
Does he affect hundreds of customers?
And the commercial. He had one at Rocky Branch not long ago, and he thought he was gonna have to cut off that whole section of commercial.
With the high school, you know, this is back in the spring, when the high, or back in the winter, when the high school was still in session. I mean, you don't want to turn the water off to the high school in the middle of the day. Restrooms, right, water fountains, I mean, you can't wash your hands.
Cafeteria.
Doesn't work.
So, has he got a plan on locations of where he's gonna go put these things in?
I don't think so. I think he's, he's got a rough idea just because of where he's had problems, where he wants to do the valves that you can insert with the water still on. But he won't have any trouble spending however much money we budget, because it, you know, we have a much greater need than that. We're just trying to get started.
Okay, are there any more questions?
Nope.
All right, let's move on to, uh, I guess a recap of all the-
Yeah, so, total capital, capital for twenty-twenty-one is nine point six million dollars. And then I just wanted to show you the sources of funds for that. So, the biggest piece of the pie, or the donut, I should say, is three point five million for Jifa Projects. And then the, the Navy section, this year we have General Fund, uh, contributing one point eight million. Again, a million of that is butterballs. Uh, then the two splosts you see on the right, the lighter blues, each of those are contributing one point two million dollars towards these projects. Um, L-MIG is a small sliver of the pie. That was that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we talked about. And then Water and Sewer is contributing one point six million towards capital projects. Again, that's kind of what we've been working towards with rate increases, is to be able to pay for some of this. And then Stormwater, um, I don't know if we mentioned that, but that was eighty thousand for Stormwater improvements. All right, Debt Service, just wanted to kind of update you where we are this year. So, you know, twenty-twenty was where we saw our four hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in our debt service payment, but we have another slight increase in twenty-twenty-one. So, it's a four percent increase. So, last, in twenty-twenty, we're paying seven hundred and thirty-five thousand in principal, whereas in twenty-twenty-one, it's a eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, um, dollars towards principal. But the interest is going down slightly, so that doesn't necessarily wash it out, but, um, we're seeing a four percent increase in our bond payment again this year. So, that is all the slides I have. Mayor, did you want to talk specifically? I can point things out in the book.
Okay, so we have a Part Two for tomorrow.
Correct.
Uh, and so, one of the things that I'm, when I flip through the, the budget, I'm not seeing, I had asked you to put in, and we talked about how you would put it in, but a full roster of employees and their information. We agreed to leave the names out.
Okay.
Uh, but I don't see it in this budget.
Okay.
Now, I don't, right now, I may not have to have it in the budget, but I want you to provide me a copy of that.
All right.
Um, Council, is there anything that you all, uh, feel like you have questions or a need for after only having one day to review this budget before we get to Part Two tomorrow? Okay. Uh, Tom, did you have anything else you wanted to highlight that, that, uh, Council should be reviewing as preparation for tomorrow?
Hmm, no. Printed, no.
Can I see it?
Yeah. Do you mean to unplug?
Yeah.
There's no question that today is like a, a hundred-feet-high overview of the budget, but the details are inside of all of these pages. And how many pages does this budget? Hundred and three, hundred and four pages? Uh, so this was by no means meant to be a comprehensive review of the budget. This is just Part One, an overview. So, I, I, I don't necessarily expect a lot of questions, but I would like to give the opportunity if anybody does want to throw anything out there.
And I do apologize for y'all not getting the books till yesterday, but we were crunching numbers till then. Um, so I pointed out earlier, page two is the summary. And then the next section, you'll see until you get to Capital where we were earlier, that whole next section is revenue, and it's by fund. So, you'll see the revenues by fund. And then the Capital is in the middle of the book, page twenty-four. And then on page twenty-nine, that is where the expenses start. And so, page twenty-nine is a summary of all of that. So, every department just tells you the summary and what the total change was for each department.
So, are all departments on twenty-nine?
It continues on to thirty, but yes.
Because it looks like it's in color on twenty-nine, but it goes to black and white on thirty.
The, yeah, so the actual departments that we talk about are all on page twenty-nine. The other kind of special funds are on page thirty. That's why they're in black and white.
Oh, I see. You got them highlighted, you got departments highlighted by cover, color.
Yes.
Okay.
Three.
Uh-huh.
You're, you're showing that, that this year's proposed budget is one percent. But the, the ten-month i- is only twenty-six million.
Michael, can you pull that a little bit closer?
On page three, the proposed budget is, is one percent higher than last year, but the ten-month number, twenty-six million, is what, nine million short of, of what the budget is. Are we gonna make that nine million up in, in two months? Or is it, or is, we're gonna have a lo- much larger shortfall in this thirty-five million dollar budget?
Um, well, so, General Fund, part of it is, yes, we still have some revenues to receive. Like, for instance, one million dollars is a insurance premium tax revenue that we'll get. We'll get it at the very end of the fiscal year. Um, we still have, you know, monthly, we have loss coming in. And some, some of our revenue is about a, a month in arrears, so we actually have three more, we have three more months of loss that'll be collected. So, we still have revenue coming in for that. Um, some of the other differences are in splosts. So, we budgeted to use some fund balance this year, which is why we're showing a higher, uh, revenue in, um, twenty-twenty, but we haven't, like, we haven't spent the street money yet. Um, and that would come out of fund balance. So, that's kind of a convoluted answer, but yes, we still have revenues rolling in. Um, but part of that difference is use of fund balance, so. Any other questions?
I got a question about the, uh, Carol tomorrow. So, we, we're only budgeting twelve thousand five hundred for the final quarter.
Yes.
Um, I guess so that, does that mean that we're anticipating not renewing the Carol tomorrow for the rest of the year?
That's how it's budgeted, but-
That has been, uh, that's exactly how I'm considering it, uh, right now. Uh, it has not been placed in the budget. We may need to bring it up and discuss it, but, um, I'm not inclined to include it in the budget. If anybody else, uh, is, we can start looking at that, but that agreement ends, uh, with this next payment, with this final quarterly payment. Uh, and I've seen no proposal, uh, no request for us to renew that.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Is the, is the Carol tomorrow, is there any significance to, are, are we getting any benefits from?
That's a great question, and it's why, uh, it needs to be revisited. Uh, I'd like someone to come and explain to us what we are getting for that fifty thousand dollars a year. In addition to that, our Villarica Development Authority also pays them an additional thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So, they receive eighty-five thousand dollars a year from the City of Villarica, and I think that, uh, uh, we, we need someone to come here and, uh, tell us what, what that money gets us. And nobody's asked me for that money again, so, uh, I'm not sure they even want it again.
I'm sure they'll take it if we give it to them.
That's not happening.
Are the other cities paying?
Yes, ma'am.
They're paying?
Yes, ma'am. Other cities do, uh, contribute as well. I don't know if they'll, you know, if they're gonna be renewing any agreements. I don't know what their agreements are.
I mean, are their amounts similar to ours, or higher, or lower?
So, I, I think I can speak for Carrollton. I believe they pay a hundred thousand dollars a year, if I'm not mistaken. I do not know what the smaller cities contribute. So, now that's what the City of Carrollton contributes. Their Development Authority may contribute an additional amount. I don't know. That part I don't know. I mean, it, it's worth having a discussion, but, uh, I don't see the discussion until they make a request or till someone comes to us to, uh, present the item. And as of right now, it's not included in this, uh, fiscal twenty-twenty-one budget. Okay, are there any other questions?
Sarah, on page fourteen, it looks like the, the, uh, two thousand eight Carroll County Splosts is completely consumed.
That is my hope, so, um, you know, we've been spending it this year. And, um, there's a few more projects that they're trying to get done before the end of September, so I'm hoping it'll be fully expended. If not, then I'll have to bring a budget amendment for, and we'll have to put it in that use of fund balance, and then show the expenditure as well.
I'm sorry, that was page fourteen?
Yes.
And that was for which, which?
It's the two thousand eight Splosts, the old Splosts.
For Carroll County?
Yes.
Hundred and fifty thousand or something left in it right now?
Yeah, trying to use that up.
Okay, if there are no more questions, uh-
I'm gonna go if there's no more questions.
Well, then, go.
All right. So, I've been meeting with recreation week and to wrap my head around what we're doing, what we're not doing, what we need. So, one of the things that I've learned is that we have been in the practice of allowing the football teams to use the baseball fields for practice sod. So, they've been practicing in the outfield, which is not good for the baseball fields. So, I reached out to the only contact that I have with Ingalls, and finally got a call from an attorney that represents them. And I have asked him if they would be open to a land lease of the Ingalls site. So, if you're familiar with that, it's fifty acres that sits on sixty-one in front of the V-Plex. And what I have proposed to him would be a five-year land lease, where we go in and put in gravel parking lots and practice fields. The double, triple benefit for us, one is it would make July third parking more effective, because we'd actually have some gravel parking out there instead of just a big, open, sloppy field. And two, we'd not only get football practice fields out of it, but in the spring, a football field is a soccer field. So, in the, in the fall, we wouldn't, it wouldn't really benefit us in the soccer program, but in the, I mean, in the fall, but in the spring, we could actually practice soccer out there too, which is an issue. Uh, another thing that I've done is I've had my first meeting with Jody, who is the head of the Soccer Association. So, if you're familiar with how our rec runs, all the sports and all the classes and all the rentals go through our admin staff in Goldust. But the soccer program, even though they don't handle the money, they have a board, and they run the soccer program. And in the course of that conversation, I asked Jody, how many fields do you need for your current participation? And he said, I need twice what we have. So, if you're familiar with Fullerville, that's about a twenty-acre site. He needs twice that right now. And his participation pre-COVID was about four hundred. I think his peak was about five hundred. So, we've seen a real drop in our numbers this fall, which I don't think is really indicative of the program or interest in the program. But at some point, we need to think about what additional fields would look like. Another consideration is when the north bypass is constructed, I would like to see that entire area develop commercially as opposed to industrial. And one of the things that I think would enhance that would be a road that ran from the north bypass to Fullerville. And if we do that, then that Fullerville complex could develop commercially. And if that's the case, then we would need to build all the fields someplace. So, that's one thing that I'm looking at. That kind of property doesn't readily exist in Villarica. You can't just go find a fifty or sixty-acre, flat, dry, without rock site anymore in Villarica, but that's sort of where we're headed. Another issue that has come up- Another issue that has come up, as I've talked to folks, has come up in my weekly meetings with Wesley. So I've been meeting with Wesley from Pine Mountain for about, I wanna say this month, it's two been two years. And when I first started meeting with him, like, it seems like everybody else that I talked to, I had this big unmet demand for maintenance that had developed over years. And so we initially threw a bunch of people at it, and then at some point in the two years, we moved the Douglas inmate crew out there full time every day. So at the beginning, I had the grounds out there some, and Nick out there some, and Jeremy's guys out there some, and the inmates out there some, and then eventually I just moved the inmates out there altogether. Well, we've we've lost them, but during those two years, we've cleaned up a lot of that park. We had an employee there who was a hoarder, and we have taken off literally roll off after roll off after roll off, full of junk that had been stored out there for ten years or longer. So that's pretty much gone. So now we're working on a combination of improving the buildings that are out there with building additional facilities. So here's the policy question that I think y'all need to consider. Pine Mountain is a complete cash pit. Complete cash pit. We are spending a half a million dollars out there or more, and we're probably pulling in a little bit more than a hundred thousand in revenue. The good the good and the bad of that is that's money that I don't re I don't feel like we really have to spend at this point in our, you know, renovation. But it is the closest thing to a tourist attraction that we have. So if you are involved in our weekly meetings with Sharon, who is basically a marketing person for the city, she is constantly putting the name of Villarica out to people all over the state through publications, through all kind of social media, through the other regional information centers. But she's done a great job, it's just that what she has to promote is really limited. Because at the end of the day, Pine Mountain is not a place that you would visit that involves a hotel stay. It's more of a day trip, and it's more importantly geared toward elementary school field trips and homeschool groups. Even though people do go out there and walk, and they walk their dog, and there's some other sort of more adult uses, the primary use is kids. And they're not gonna go downtown and eat primarily, they're gonna bring their lunch if they eat there at all. They're not gonna stay in a hotel, they're not, you know, immediately gonna buy a house here and move here. I mean, it's, so when you think about what Pine Mountain is contributing versus what it's costing, we at least need to have the conversation and say, yeah, we're okay with that. You know, that we want that to be part of our brand and part of our image and part of our community, and we're willing to pay like four hundred grand. That's basically what the library cost us, which in most communities is operated by the county. So we've got two four hundred thousand dollar cash drains that are, in my mind, discretionary. All right, then in addition to that, you've got a rec department that is now really impaired because of COVID. So we just finished registration Friday, and the numbers are down drastically. So when I met with Jody, he was hoping that his numbers were gonna fall no more than from four hundred to two fifty. But his numbers are down so bad that he has extended his registration another week. So this is the third week of extended registration, but parents are just not signing their children up.
Do we have any preliminaries on his, on the soccer program?
How many?
From the four hundred, you said drastically?
Yeah, he was hoping for two fifty, but I he's not even at two hundred.
Okay.
Right, so I mean, he's he's taking, his program's taking a big hit. Which which I I'm not, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with the program, it's just the environment that we're in right now. And what it's done to the department since Marage is it's caused us to basically re-task people in the athletics program because we refunded everything. So we didn't do any spring sports. We gave everybody's money back, and it was a lot of people, you can remember, how many checks did we sign?
It was over seven hundred.
Yeah, so I mean, we had good participation, we wrote a lot of refund checks, gave everybody money back. And so what the athletics group has done for the last four months, five months, is cut grass. Right? That's not what we hired them to do.
So we need to make a decision about whether we close it down for the rest of the year?
So now we so now we have Pine Mountain and the library, which is impaired because of COVID, rec, which is impaired. We've decided to bring a new director on, right? So I think we sort of have made a decision. But there's a lot of money in that when you take those three operations. And if we don't have events, then that minimizes the productivity of Janet and Sharon and now Shannon, who's the new coordinator. So we're not doing concert, we're trying to figure out how to do Gold Rush, so we're thinking about a Friday night concert instead of Saturday night, and then we're talking about maybe not doing the parade. The concern there is the parade is sort of the the door that gets people into the city to go to the vendors, right? Because if you've ever watched the flow, when the parade's over, people walk over the railroad track at South Carroll and go visit the vendors. Well, if we don't have the parade, are people gonna come to the festival? Like, why do why do they come to the festival? Do they come downtown because of the vendors? And the parade is this sort of, well, if we're gonna go to the vendors, let's go to the parade, or is it the reverse? Is it, let's go to the parade, and oh, since we're here, let's go to the vendors?
What's the what's the schedule? When is it supposed to happen?
This is the second Saturday.
The twelfth. Got Velcro pygmies on September eleventh?
On the Friday night.
And then Saturday, the twelfth, from ten to three-ish for Gold Rush.
Right, and we're and we're still planning to have the the run. So the Shriners are pushing us now for a decision because, you know, they're sort of doing this at the same time, you know, tell us that you're doing it, and we're not sure we're coming, you know, because of COVID again, right? It just makes everything so uncertain for people to make plans and decide what to do.
So just just to talk about that just for a minute, so I've been in discussions about that parade for the last few weeks, and I have been very reluctant to not do that parade. We, the council, agreed to do the concert on September the eleventh, and I have been getting probably a question every day or two about whether or not we're gonna do that parade. So I would like you all to think about that parade and do your own sort of research. I'm being told that every everyone else around us has canceled their parades. I would like some input, and maybe tomorrow we could discuss it when we do part two of this budget, so that we can get an answer over to Main Street, so they can make a decision about whether or not we're gonna have the parade. Ideally, I wanna have the parade, there's no question about it, but there are real considerations that we need to have about whether or not we do this this parade. I think that there is a reasonable plan for the concert, uh, and I think we will do that anyway. But what is he doing?
He knows you're talking.
I was gonna try to talk over him, but he just laid on it, he wouldn't let off. Uh, so I do want, and and if you have any input now, it may be a little premature, but you might wanna ask around, you might wanna do your own sort of review, but I think tomorrow we should try to have some kind of input that we can take back and and discuss with staff, it's a valid point.
The parade route is crowded with people, and as soon as the parade is over, they either they either go to the vendors that are in brick and mortar along Main Street, they go to the restaurant because it's close to lunch and they wanna get in early, or they go to the temporary vendors that are set up right out here in tents, so before they.
What has been the vendor participation, if you know? Do we have?
How many?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, we we have twenty something already signed up.
Okay.
So the vendors wanna come, I mean, what have the vendors been doing?
Nothing.
They need money, they need P us to drive people to their tents or or buildings or.
And I don't want I don't wanna have thirty vendors show up, have no activity, and then try to get them to come back next year.
Well, I'm concerned that without a parade, you don't have the activity, I mean, that's the reality.
My concern.
Have the vendor.
I mean, I wish we could encourage social distancing and face masks, but unfortunately, that is about worth nothing. That don't mean we won't, I mean, that may well be what we do, but.
If you just encourage face masks, you know, at least they would probably come.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, and that.
Well, I believe that's been one of the arguments that's been made to me, which is not only will uh, will we have a crowd, but we may have an enormous crowd because of pent up people, because of people who already were gonna go to this anyway. Uh, so that's actually more of a concern in terms of if we're concerned about crowding. But I have been very reluctant to uh, to to walk away from that, and I still am. I I I just would like to get some input before a decision is made.
Well, we've gotta be conflicted, because if we have a big event.
We're gonna be on TV?
We could be.
If we do have a big event, we got to encourage, you know, everybody to wear a face mask, at least.
We would certainly do that, I mean, but I just don't know.
I know, but.
Going to make a big difference, but we will try.
It's bound to make a difference.
May make some difference, you're right. Okay.
So comments about the sort of just the big picture of all that, Pine Mountain, library, rec?
Recreation, yeah.
Main Street.
Some of you had to have seen some of that discussion coming simply by looking at, A, the budget, we've had some one-on-one discussions about some of it, so this is a time to talk about it, if you have comments or questions regarding Pine Mountain, the library, and the recreation department.
I just um, in light of your conversation with Jody, where he basically says that he needs twice of what he has, um, I I would just renew my inquiry about, is there any room in this budget or any appetite among the council for some sort of recreation department facilities master plan for all of them? I know we did the one for Goldust, but I mean, you know, we really need to understand what our needs are, so we're just not doing this piecemeal, and that's just a concern of mine. And for my constituency in particular, I mean, they're they're asking for, you know, mostly young families, they're looking for what are their what are their recreation, you know, what other recreation opportunities are there? The V Plex at Goldust, um, you know, dog parks, now soccer fields, it sounds like, you know, because Fullerville's beyond capacity, it sounds like, so. I know this is a recreation year in which things are looking different, but I think if you look at the trends pre-COVID, I would like to see something, some sort of, something in our budget for a recreation facilities master plan.
Well, I I think it probably, Tom has already alluded to it, we we are not uh, in a position to consider doing anything drastic with recreation, clearly, we just hired a new recreation director, but uh, it's still worth a discussion on that, but I think more importantly, we need to be focused on Pine Mountain and and the library. Are we committed to those two in a way that we're prepared to pay the cost? And we're looking at some four hundred thousand at the at the Pine Mountain Gold Museum, which is largely a loss, it's just, we spend the money to keep it.
That's the net.
And that, so that's the net, uh, which is a loss, four hundred thousand. And then at the library, I mean, what is that number? That's close to a half a million, isn't it? The point is that keeping these programs costs money. The budget is, as you can tell, already over a million dollars short, uh, and this, have we based this on a rate yet, on a mileage?
Six and a quarter.
So six and a quarter, I'm still losing a million dollars uh, in this budget.
Million five or something.
Million five, or was it a million eight? I'm sorry. I could open my book back up, but.
One point six.
One point six.
Um, yeah, the library itself is five hundred fifty thousand, and there isn't much income that offsets that.
So those two departments alone eat up a million dollars for which we have little to no revenue stream.
That's one and a half mils all by itself.
Okay.
We might have to consider a temporary shutdown.
See, the problem with doing any kind of shutdown is your only savings is off in the future because we're a unemployment direct reimbursor, so any unemployment money that people receive, we pay.
A hundred percent.
Back to the Department of Labor.
Plus, we have to maintain the facilities.
And we have to maintain it, so in the first year, in the first six months, you don't save anything.
So any shutdown would be a permanent shutdown, it's the only thing that makes sense.
Sense.
Yes.
Yeah, and the facilities.
We can't afford to do that.
Don't go away, right? I mean, the library's, what, three years, three and a three and a half years old?
Uh.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, it's about three years and a couple of months.
It's not permanent, it's not something we really wanna talk about, because we we need them, so we gotta find short-term fix.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we're looking, that's what we're looking to hear here today. Is that the answer?
Is that the policy?
Here tomorrow.
Is that gonna be, well, we'll hear tomorrow, but that's that's what we're asking here. When you consider this, is this something that, okay, we're gonna keep it, we gotta find a way to pay for it, or is it a real open question to close either of those departments permanently?
Did we really expect the library to generate surplus funds?
They don't generate hardly any funds.
That's what I'm saying, I I don't know of any library, it's a service.
Most of them are county operated, they're not city oper, I mean, around Georgia.
So why is our, why is ours different? Okay.
I don't know the history.
Yeah, there would be a lot of history to discuss on that, most of us weren't here when the library was contemplated and when it was built and funded.
Okay, another related conversation. We have approached, we, the staff, have approached the DDA, who is also the CBB, and asked them to voluntarily split those two organizations up. And that decision has not been made, but in most of my experience with CBBS, they are heavily hotel oriented in terms of board representation. Ours has none, because our board is the DDA who happens to also do CBB. So our board is very downtown, which it should be, because it started as the DDA. If the DDA does vote to split those up, I would like to see the board of the new CBB comprised of. I would like to see the board of the new CBB comprised of a couple of hotel people, maybe a downtown restaurant person, but probably Wesley from Pine Mountain, who's our main draw. Maybe someone from Rec, if not the Rec Director. You sort of get the idea of changing the flavor of the thing some.
Not exactly a citizen board?
No, this is more who should have input into how hotel motel money is spent. And the reason that you spend hotel motel money is to put people in hotels. That's the whole point of the hotel motel tax, is to pay for facilities and programming that puts people back in the hotel. So, one of the things that we've talked about earlier is recreational tourism tournaments. Our facilities don't support that. V-Plex is the closest thing to a tournament site, but the fields have not been well-maintained and they don't drain. So, one of the things that you've seen us do is we took advantage of the shutdown by painting and carpeting City Hall and working on the electrical and then painting and carpeting in here. If we have another season where we don't play, we should take advantage of that and redo those fields. But we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars a field to regrade it and sod it, and there's nine of them. So that's a big ticket fix, but it would get us to a place where we could more actively do that. We could have another long conversation about travel ball and how that fits in, and how do you balance Rec with tournaments and all that stuff too? But I just want you to be thinking about, where does Rec fit in to your vision for Villa Rica? I feel like where we're located, that recreation is one of the most important things we do, and that we should do what we can to have the best recreational program possible because I think that attracts and retains young families, which I think is to our best interest. But we have a lot of work to do to do that. The other piece of that that we have talked about but not really put any specific plans together on is the gym. So, we leased the gym from the school system at the elementary school, but they want that space and they want to demo that building. And they're willing to wait for us to, you know, get our stuff together so that we can survive that. So, I've looked at a plan to build a two-court facility add-on at Goldust. So just go out the back of the building and build a building with two more courts in it. That would give us the capacity for our program because that is one of the healthiest programs we have. We just don't have the facility to handle all the participants. If we do that, and we do the laser grading at the V-Plex where all those fields are playable, I would convert Goldust to little guy soccer and take baseball out of Goldust, put it all at the V-Plex. And then what you would have at Goldust is a playground, a splash pad, and little guy soccer, which to me fits together. And then at the V-Plex, we'd have one football field and then baseball, and do baseball right.
If we move Villa Rica baseball to the V-Plex, would we still have room for travel ball and tournaments and stuff like that, or?
No, I think we still have to build more fields.
Recreation is critical to bringing young families with children into this area.
Thank you.
You know, my wife and I are empty nesters, we don't necessarily use the recreation department. But my children live in Reed, my grandchildren live in Reed Plantation, and they use it. So if you wanna bring young families in, you have to have recreation.
Good recreation.
And then if you wanna bring tourism recreation, you gotta even have better recreation. You gotta have better fields, it'd be a destination for those travel ball teams and tournaments and-
So, one of the sites that we've talked about, even though it was only briefly, is the sixty-whatever acres that wrap the V-Plex. That owner is talking to a residential developer right now. So, if we're interested in that site, then, you know, you're talking about three-quarters of a million dollars probably. But we would need to do that sooner than later. I don't see any indication that the Ingalls site is available. But I'm hoping this inquiry into the land lease and doing like some practice fields will give me some feedback that will say to me, "Yeah, we're not really planning on doing anything here, so you can lease it." 'Cause I think that's what they're gonna tell me.
And then turn it into something else later down the road?
I don't know that they have plans to-
No, us-
-to use it for anything, ever.
But if we've got at least five years down the road, it may be something different.
Yeah.
If we're serious about expanding the V-Plex, we got to buy the land, we got to have the land.
Right. So what are our other options? What else makes us a tourist destination?
What can we add to Pine Mountain Gold Museum to generate more money? What kinds of activities in our namesake kind of field would people pay to come and see and do?
You know, Wesley has great ideas, but what it's gonna do is make us more of what we are. If we do a petting zoo, kids, right? If we do more educational space back where the mine is, homeschool groups, field trips, you know what I'm saying?
I thought at one point you mentioned weddings and everything.
Yep, yep. He could have small events there, but nothing, nothing large. So, one thing that we could talk about is a water park. But again, that feels like a day trip to me. Even if you're, you know, forty miles away, you could drive here, spend the day at a water park and go back. So, what I just saw in Covington when we visited last week is that they have collaborated with neighboring cities and have become the destination, sort of by virtue of their size and their proximity to twenty. And they are the town where people stay for four, five, six nights. And they go to Madison, and they go to Monroe, and they spend the day in Covington. But then they go to Atlanta, and they, you know, go to the aquarium or whatever. But Covington has promoted themselves as sort of the base of operations. And I don't really see that model working here because I don't see Carrollton as a tourist destination or Bremen or Douglasville, you know what I'm saying? I don't see a collaboration where that works for us. And our hotel properties don't support that anyway. So I wish I had, like, some, you know, idea or solution to this, but I think we can at least articulate where we are and start thinking about what we wanna become. But a tourist location just doesn't feel like where we're headed.
But the sports center thing does, so-
We could do that.
And since we got some time now, since our activities are down, now's the time to get it done.
Yeah, it's just, those capital dollars are competing with a lot of other capital dollars. So buying land and building fields is gonna compete with Butterballs, it's gonna compete with whatever we do with Avante, it's gonna compete with redoing downtown. You know, we're gonna have to spend money to do Mira Lake Connector. We're gonna have to spend money on the utilities to do the north bypass. We gotta spend money on sewer to do Alamoore. I mean-
Alamoore still rolling?
Mm-hmm. Yep, I got an email from him today. Yep, they're still doing engineering.
Well, I, for one, appreciate the discussion. I've always said that if a program is worth having, it's worth having fully. And the recreation department really has not, I think it has so much more potential than we have seen in a while. I'm looking forward to seeing that come back. But I get a lot of calls about travel ball and about more ball fields, and more calls than anything about additional gym facilities. I've even talked to the school systems about working some kind of a share program, and they're open to that kind of thing, but ultimately, that is a Band-Aid that really just doesn't accomplish anything. So, if we're serious about keeping these programs, we're gonna have to be serious about prioritizing some funding over there. I think it was Tom who said, three years ago during the interview, "If I wanna know what you care about, I just pick up this book, and I know what you care about in your city." And I think that that is ever more true with what we're going through now because we're having to look at a very micro level at what we're doing in this city and make some decisions about, are we doing the right things? Are we gonna continue to do these things? Or are we gonna cut 'em off? And if that's the decision, then we have to live with it. But it doesn't feel to me that that is an appropriate decision with regard to recreation.
All right, another question that we can knock around is about starter homes. So, in my three years, I've watched primarily the completion of failed neighborhoods.
That's right.
Right? So Dogwood Trace, Reed Plantation, Augusta Woods, Southwoods, Brandywine. They were all conceived prior to the recession, failed in the recession.
Liberty Point, Falls.
Liberty Point, the Falls. And starting in seventeen and more so in eighteen, they started coming back. So we still have Twin Oaks, Summer Gate, and Charleston Place, North Woods, Water Mist, and South Harbor, and then a couple of vacant pieces. So between Carrington and Hawthorne and Connors Road at Nally. So that's seven that I can think of off the top of my head where we're probably gonna get some more residential. But my question to you is, is we, what I think we should do now is we should pursue builders who are gonna build what we want to build because up to now, we've not really had a say. You know, the Platts were already approved, the infrastructure was in place, and builders had just been building to match whatever was already there, right? But we're gonna soon be in a situation where builders are looking for new subdivisions. And I don't know that we want to pursue more starter homes.
I'd say we don't. I think we've got plenty.
I second that.
So, one of the things that the market is gonna do that's gonna make the homes more expensive is the fact that they're gonna, a new development is gonna be built from scratch at today's dollars. So instead of like somebody going into Brandywine and buying developed lots way below market, we're gonna have a developer come in and they're gonna pay forty or fifty thousand dollars a lot, the builder is, for a developed lot in a new subdivision. 'Cause that construction of that new lot is gonna be expensive. Well, that's gonna make the house price higher all by itself. So I think that may actually help us some. Alamoore may help us some because I think that, because of the timing of that, it's gonna be all-new construction and not inexpensive because of the rock and the water and all the things, the topo things that they're gonna deal with in Alamoore. I think that if council can talk about that subject and agree, that would help the staff going forward, not just on Bobby's side of plan review and permitting and all that, but on the economic development side because I think we should proactively go after the best builders that we have experience with and in effect, try to minimize the involvement of the guys that we don't- whatever, like-
Let me, Tom-
-negative it circumstance with.
Well, I mean, we just approved the new zoning ordinance, which, I mean, part of my comments on that zoning ordinance were to increase architectural standards for homes, require amenity areas, all these things that would promote a higher-quality development beyond what we traditionally have in Villa Rica. So, I, from my perspective, I don't think we would've went through those efforts if we didn't already believe in that.
All right, so what's-
From my view.
So what's about to be built? Apartments and townhomes. That's the two things I see coming, right? Walton is gonna do the housing authority, Arbor Valley's gonna do Clegg Horn. The piece behind the high school is higher-end but still apartments. The Connors Road piece between Carrington and Hawthorne is gonna be townhome or condo. The piece beside where I live between Liberty Chevrolet and Hickory Level Apart, Hickory Falls Townhomes. See what I'm saying? I mean, that feels like a pattern to me.
Well-
That's either what the market is saying that people want or that's the perception of developers and builders about Villa Rica.
I see those two things a little differently, though. I think density is very good for us. I think density helps in a big, big way-
Right.
-for what we need to do, which is part of growing out of. When you talk about new developments, though, new subdivisions, I am absolutely on board with a higher-end product or no product at all. I think we have enough of the starter homes because I've always said Villa Rica's a prime location. It's taken some time for us to become a sort of visible to people who might come out and spend that kind of money. But that's, when we talk about approving new subdivisions, that's what I'm looking at there. When we talk about density, though, I'm gonna be all for that because they do very good for us. They're good for the city. And all of the places you're talking about already are zoned for what they wanna do there. Out there behind Home Depot with the townhomes, they're already done. Everything else that you talked about is something that we've already agreed to with regard to that density. So I wouldn't want it to sound in any way like we're poo-pooing that because we're not. But we are aiming for a higher standard for new subdivision development. Does anybody else have any comments?
What is it that's going in next to the Tanner Urgent Care Place?
That's a scene-
Assisted living building.
Who's building it?
Tanner.
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 I think we've had a very productive discussion today. We've covered a lot of territory that we've been talking about probably for six or eight weeks about bringing to council. Does anyone have any questions before we close out? Because we're gonna have part two tomorrow. Is it at noon?
Yes.
Will it be at?
Uncourt.
It'll be at uncourt, and then we'll come up here for the meeting? Okay, all right, any other questions?
None.
Sarah, do you have anything to add?
No.
Tom, anything else? Alyssa, ladies? Okay, if there are no more questions from council, then I will adjourn this meeting and we will meet back tomorrow at noon.